Monday, September 8. Let the record show that we do have Warren. Commissioner Velazquez being absent. Want to thank everyone for being here and welcome you all to our meeting. Everyone, please stand for the place of residence.
President, be good to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Commissioner Velazquez is present. Ms. Younger, can you have me?
Yes, Your Honor, you have one public comment?
Five minutes, Judge? Yes.
Does it start when I start talking?
Yes, thank you. Yes, go ahead and take the podium. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Judge Vera and all the members of the Commissioners' Court. My name is Fern Spencer, and I live at 340 FM 2294 Santa Elena, Texas. I have been a resident of Starr County for approximately 15 years, and when people ask me where I'm from, I tell them San Sejo. I actually identify as living on No Gotta Ranch on the corner of Duluth and No Inspiration Roads and have a daily exercise routine of doing Diddly Squat. I am -- excuse me, since I'm very nervous, I'm not a person who asks for any favors, political or otherwise, nor do I enjoy public speaking. I wear my hat hard on my sleeve and cry when I'm upset. Thank you for allowing me to speak during the public comments, as I am upset and disappointed that this issue I am here to bring to your attention was not put on the agenda for this meeting today, as the Commissioner was apparently made of this issue on Saturday, August 16, between 9:26 and 9:37 a.m. What I appear today is I am asking for you to please hear me out with listening ears and open minds. I cannot proceed to finalize anything for an important milestone in my mother's life until I have a venue that can accommodate her physical needs. My appearance here today is to seek the Commissioners' Court's support and approval as recognized members of the aforementioned court to consider the needs of our small community. I'm requesting the use of the Abel Gonzalez Community Center in Santa Sejo for a 90th birthday open house for my mother, Helen Spencer, which is located in Precinct 4. I'm appealing to this Commissioners' Court as I feel that I have been stonewalled trying to convince Commissioner Hernan Garza and the site manager, who gets our orders from him, of allowing the facility to be utilized for parties as it is important to me, my family, and other constituents in the Santa Sejo, Del Mida, La Gloria, Santa Elena area. I understand that there's concerns with Mr. Garza's express liability issues, but I indicated to him when I spoke to him that that's a public facility. I also understand that the reason that they decided two years ago to not allow individuals to use this thing is there was damage and alcohol. I have researched and communicated with the site manager. Yes, there was damage. There's a one and a half or a two and a half inch about scrape in the drywall, which could have resulted as the caterer carrying things into the kitchen. But that to me is collateral damage, and I'm sorry for quoting my finger. That's collateral damage. That's not negligence. That's not whatever. But anyway, close to individual usage beyond comprehension, this close to individual usage is beyond my comprehension and thinking. All the work that Commissioner Abel Gonzalez apparently did for this community was greatly appreciated, as the building is named after him. May his blessed soul be resting in eternal peace. Not everyone has access to appropriate facilities such as that that is conducive to meeting their needs, smooth terrain, handicap parking, handicap baskets to the facility in an appropriate area that can accommodate the needs of those who travel a distance to celebrate with us, including Michigan and possibly Oklahoma. I do not have a living relative in this county. Therefore, after much agony and sleepless nights, and I'm sure they're not over yet, on my part, I felt it was necessary to hand-deliver the letter to the offices of the Audible Judge Vera as Chairman of this Court, County Attorney Renee Montalvo, and County Clerk Umberto Gonzalez, and Commissioner Hernan Garza, as they are the parties of whom would have to ensure the proper documentations as prepared with pertaining to the information in order to get the Court's approval. I purposely delivered the first notification to the judge's office because I spent hours researching who does what, and I am no expert on this. But when I -- every office I went to, every place I dropped the letter off, everybody wanted to know what is the concern. I will tell you, this young lady right here, Reyna, kind of got a hard time for me because she's greeting the people. What is it concerned to her? When I found out, she, sir, works in your office, and thank you for your service, okay? I appear before you today to seek your support and approval as a voting member of the Commissioners' Court to consider the needs of our community. Oh, yeah. I fully understand that a reasonable rental fee nor having to make a refundable damage deposit is not a non-reasonable requirement. I assure you that I will be attentive to what is happening with this facility and promise you that should anything get damaged, I will take responsibility for it. The only thing is that I would ask that it be properly documented as to what was damaged. I'm also encouraging it to be required that a county staff member be present being such an event, then let be. I offered to pay two hours of whoever they decide to put in there, their salary, because I feel this -- I happen to have the resources to do that, even though my resources have been cut in half since I put my mother in the facility. But I plan. I can't go to the Commission and say, "Can you increase my budget?" It doesn't happen. I was quoted by two people this week that affects my budget. One of them was, "Well, we hope that they will be able to use the facility soon." Hope doesn't do anything for me. "We're hoping that your mother's insurance approves the physical therapy that we started her on four sessions ago," which I questioned why, because I told you, "Yes, I'm willing to pay, but $1.05 a minute, $94.50 for a half hour or whatever?" Sorry, I asked you to please tell me. All right, enough of that. The only thing that I ask is to part of your documentation, please let this happen, as I do not care to have to tell my mother one extremely disappointing news, that she's the one that begged me to not beg me, excuse me. She's the one that asked me to have it over there because she knows everybody. She knows two people in that facility, and I will tell you, she's been there since January and does not know their names. I eagerly waited positive response, preferably in writing. I'm not into this verbal thing, even though my business law class that I took in college tells me that you can have verbal agreements. I assure you that I will promptly return the forms and need to be signed and pay monies involved. If you have any questions for me today, I hope you do so. I cannot stay to see what the budget increases are for the nutrition center or that because I need to check on my mother. I had her in the emergency room. They tell me she has two mild to moderate fractures. They can't tell me if they're new or old because I have to go to medical records to get that, blah, 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 blah. Anyway, if I could answer any of your questions, feel free to ask me now, please.
Ms. Spencer, this is a comment, a public comment, so the Court--
Can't act on it today.
Exactly. We just listen, and we'll take it into consideration.
Okay, where? How long do I have to wait for the consideration, sir?
I guess you can get on a regular agenda item at our next meeting. At that time, we would take it up as an action item.
Is there any paperwork I could fill in advance? Like I did fill out what I found online, the official -- excuse me, the form that it says rental things for Starr County. I filled that out. I have it in my possession, and I would be willing to leave it to get officially on the thing, but I'm trying to surprise my mother with my sister, my great niece, my great-great nephew, and all of them coming for a party. I've been offered a facility in Kakabaya. The people I am inviting to this are locals. Like I said, we have no family in Starr County. The only family we have is those in the letter that I did deliver, which I do have a copy, but my five minutes would be expired. We only have those who have adopted us to be family, and they've treated us well. I don't feel it's necessary to say, "I told them I can't do that to my mother. By the time I pick her up, take her over to your house, it's time for me to turn around and take her back." Do you know what I have to do? I have to bring her home, which I don't mind doing, but it's a nightmare.
Ms. Spencer, you know, I certainly feel for your frustration. However, you know, we've been generous. We gave you certainly more than five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Because when the alarm went off, that was the five minutes. But I continued to let you speak because I can feel and sense your frustration. But like I said, since it's not an agenda item, we cannot discuss it. We cannot take any action. We cannot do anything. If you'd like, you can go ahead and call my office. We'll put you on the next Commissioners' Court meeting as an agenda item, and at that time, we can take action on it.
Okay, when I go to do that, sir, to your office, will they -- do I have to wait till your approval before I can say that this is a paperwork already?
Anyone that wants to put anything on the agenda, we usually allow it. Certainly, this would not be a problem.
Would that paper be available in your office? It wasn't offered to be in Commissioner--
If it's not a paper, you just go over there and say you want to be on the agenda. Tell them what the agenda item is, and then they will put it on the agenda, and we'll take action on it.
Okay, I located a form that says rental for Starr County facilities. That is what I'm relying on saying. I'm willing to pay whatever, but--
Well, again, you know, I'm not going to answer any questions or make any comments. I don't want to keep repeating myself.
Okay.
You need to get on an agenda item.
And I can do that through your office rather than through yours?
That's great.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Monsellos.
Any other comments?
No, Your Honor, there's no other.
If not, we'll go on with our agenda. Next item is approved with minutes. We're very excited. Move and approve. Move and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the defenders list.
Yes, the majority to review to recommend for approval.
Motion to approve, Your Honor. Second.
Move and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. And the next is the claims.
The majority to review to recommend for approval.
Second.
Move and second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Before we go with our reports, is there anyone that needs to come before the Court? If not, hold the foot, go ahead and follow our agenda. Taxes, taxes--
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is my report for the month of August. Our total collections, delinquent collections for August 2025 for Starr County were 377,957.53. Total delinquent collections same time last year were 282,554 with 49 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of 95,402 with 54 cents more than last year. Since 2024 taxes became delinquent as of July 1st, projected collections remain at 97 percent. Also, we have collected 97 percent of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections is 188,977 with 75 cents. Motocross collections for County were 59,182 with 69 cents. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Elena.
Thank you.
Clerk, Mr. Montallos.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My report should be in front of you for the month of August 2025 through the end of the month. Just going to highlight a couple of them. Our records management collected 6,035. Copies was 1,678 with 60 cents. Our records archive collected 5,00801. Total due to the treasure for all of these items was 32,01760. Very consistent all year, Judge, Commissioners. So it's been pretty consistent with what we've been collecting. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Judge.
Judge, Commissioners, morning. The total count for this month, 332,339. The federal inmates on the count, it went up as of today to 118. Yalam County inmates to 78 with a total of 267. The numbers have been increasing. They increased a lot for this month.
Are there any good news that the numbers are increasing?
By the end of this month, we should be at full capacity with both federals and Yalam.
Any questions, panel? Thank you, Chief. International Bridge?
This is the report for August 2025. The total revenue from traffic is $274,883, and we show an increase of $12,317.50 for the month of August 2024 compared to the month of August 2025. And we also show an increase of $30,683 for the collections of the month of August 2025 compared to the month of July 2025. We have the excess exchange of $59.07. And the grand total collections for August 2025, the amount that you have is wrong. It's supposed to be $274,942.07. Do you have any questions?
There's things black, so it looks good.
Yes.
Any questions? Side of the pressure is down with COVID, so he's going to be sent to the board. However, we do have it in our packet. I guess we can look at it. If there's any questions, we can call the-- On the truth.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I have the unaudited report for the month ending August 31, 2025. Starting with Cash and Bank, Page 1, we have general fund with ending balances of $3,823,982. Road and Bridge Fund, we have $325,677. Our payroll clearing account has $569,172. I'll move on to Page 2, the budget summary for revenues under general fund, which continues to Page 3. Total year-to-date collected, $20,384,041. On Page 4 and 5, we have the budget summary for expenditures under general fund. Year-to-date expenditures, $20,432,480 with a total deficit of $48,447. I'll move on to Page 6, the Road and Bridge budget summary. Year-to-date revenues, total collected, $6646,628. Total year-to-date expenditures, $6660,463 with a total deficit of $13,835. Page 7, I have the Enterprise Funds budget summary for the International Bridge. We have year-to-date revenues, $2917,584. Year-to-date expenditures, $24,4153. Total surplus, $513,430. The gas system, year-to-date revenues collected, $113,976. Year-to-date expenditures, $773,786 with a total surplus of $240,180. Transfer station, year-to-date revenues, $11,193,95. Total expenditures, $1283,85 with a total deficit of $173,690. Our debt service fund, year-to-date revenues, $1173,471. Total expenditures, $1174,750 with a small deficit of $1,278. I'll move on to Page 8, debt summary for August 31. Total debt outstanding, $21,106,350. That's including the new certificate that we just got, 2025, $10 million. And that would complete my report. If there's any questions?
Any questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
Moving on, we have a proclamation for the month of September, and this is for Starr County as Hunger Action Month on the South Texas Food Bank. Anyone to present this?
You have it, sir. You have the proclamation. It has to be read by you.
Okay. Yeah, we do have it in our packets. This is a proclamation, I guess, proclaiming anti-hunger in Starr County from the food bank. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Move and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a burn ban. It has expired, so--
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and second to go ahead and extend our burn ban. Discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 10 is an action item that's required as part of the budget process, and this is to take a record vote on the tax rate and the scheduling, the public hearing. The proposed tax rate that we're proposing, we're not passing the tax rate. It's just telling the public this is what we're proposing, and it's to keep the same tax rate as we had last year, which is point -- last year, we had .7102. This year, we're proposing a 0.7101, which is basically about the same, but very, very little. But it does keep the same tax rate, and this, I guess, budget will include the service of the dead for the courthouse and the juvenile center, which is what Ms. Elena just mentioned a little while ago. So we were able to go ahead and keep the same tax rate without having to increase anything. So that is a proposed tax rate. The public hearing, we have a public hearing scheduled, tentatively scheduled for September 24th. It will be coming out in the media and the newspaper, and certainly, the public is encouraged to come and give us whatever input they want to give us. That will be on the 24th. I think it's on a Wednesday. Do you recall, Renee?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on a Wednesday, so the meetings that we usually have on the 2nd or the 4th Monday will be moved to the Wednesday, so that we don't have one on Monday and then one Wednesday. We'll just have it on the 24th, and hopefully, we can wrap everything up. So, you know, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the proposed tax rate of .07 -- I'm sorry, 0.7101.
Motion to approve.
Move and second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item, item 11, is an MOU between the Roma Independent School District and the Sheriff's Department. This is the same agreement that we had last year, and this is just to support each other in case of any emergency. Move and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 12 is an action item regarding the development of a Starr County park master plan.
That is correct, Judge and Commissioners. Ms. Vera was not able to be present, and this item is to submit the application for the Parks and Recreation Plan.
This is--
To submit the application for the Parks and Recreation Plan.
Okay, for grants?
That is correct, for parks and ricks.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Move and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 13 is an action item that's to approve the sheriff's unconstitutional fees. I believe that this are the same--
Thanks to his agents.
--from last year. And this is required by statute.
To approve.
Move and second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 14 is an item, and this is to approve the order of election for the constitutional amendment.
I have the state order for the general election November 4, 2025. There's going to be 17 and from October 20 to October 24, from October 27 to the 29, from October 20 to the 31st. It's going to be two weeks, no weekend.
Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? Move and second, discussion. All in favor, please, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 15 is to consolidate the precincts for November 4 election.
Yes, a notice of consolidation for the precincts. For Precinct 1, at the courthouse, we would have Precinct 1, 2, 4, and 13 on Election Day. At Precinct 6, at the Roma Community Center, and we would have 6, 7, and 11 on Election Day. For Precinct 8, which is at San Isopark Building, we would have 8, 9, and 14. And Precinct 10, La Rosita Public Library, 3, 5, 10, and 12.
Motion to approve. Move and second to approve, discussion. Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items 16 through 32 are budget amendments?
Yes, it's on the order.
Motion to approve.
Second. Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And it is now 10:30 pursuant to Section 551 from 074. We'll go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and discuss possible legislative updates if it's the 31st and early voting, reasonable decisions. That's your...
Can, can we just stand there so we can take a picture with that? Food bank proclamation. Food bank proclamation. Sure.
Yep. We only have two items. One's with the order of salaries.
Motion to approve.
Second. Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And the next one was just information on election updates and legislative updates. So no, I don't need it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Honitor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.